Welcome to the county fair and today we are joined by Hamilton County Commissioner, Alyssa Reese, who is also the president of the board. And I am just delighted to have you join us today.
Yes, great to be here. Thanks for having me.
Well, there are a number of things that are happening in Hamilton County that are exciting.
Yes.
And I'm really excited to be having the opportunity to discuss them with you. One of the things is, is that the Hamilton County Commissioners have had a longstanding commitment to the veterans. And I know that has come to the forefront recently.
Yeah, it's really interesting. I'm in my first term. And come to find out, there are a lot of things in county government that people don't understand. And one of the things I ran on was really helping people understand how county government works. And so this is one of the situations where the Ohio Revised Code, AKA state law, organizes a Veterans Commission. And that commission is organized through the state. However, the county funds that organization. And in the law, it talks about how much money could be toward this organization. But it has that the organization must request the dollars. And so when I first got elected, I really didn't understand all this. All I knew that my grandfather was a veteran. He has since passed away. He was in the Navy. And he told me about all these great things. And so I got there and I said, listen, we gotta give more money to the veterans. And so the county administrator, Jeff Aludo, told me, well, no, they have to request the money. And I didn't understand it, but I thought, hey, they're veterans. They probably do know best. So anyway, now we're at a situation when the WCPO Channel 9 came with this story. It showed that we, that office was not helping a lot of veterans. And wanted to know, you know, why aren't we funding it at a larger number? And so then I got back and said, wait a minute, what's going on? And so I found that the Veterans Commission, they don't even have to come and present to the county commission because they're an independent board. And what I found at the county, the way state law is done, there are a lot of independent boards. And these independent boards don't have to, you know, respond to us. But we have to do pass-through money without any control. And being someone who I've been elected at the city level, at the state level, it was shocking to me. Now I'm at the county level. And so one of the things, as they're looking into this, I invited them to come before our commission. And they came. The executive director did not come. They said he wasn't feeling well. But they brought their chairman of the board. And they talked about these, they gave us a stack of their reports. We had never gotten a report in like five something, five years, way before I was there. They never got a report till now. We've never had a report. So in the report, I, you know, went through it and I saw some shocking things. There's eligibility to pay for eyeglasses, pharmacy needs, rent needs, mortgage needs, utility needs, transportation needs. And so when I looked at the five years back, you would have maybe 500 veterans helped one year, 1,000 veterans another year. But almost every year was $0 for glasses, $0 for pharmacy. And these are eligible expenses. We were doing bus tokings and passes. But Butler County and Warren County, they've got the big bus and SUVs. And they're taking veterans from one door to the other door. And I saw we didn't do hardly any advertising. All we had was a website. They're advertising on television. They're advertising even at our Paycor Stadium that we own. They're advertising. And I'm like, well, what's going on? We have 42,000 veterans, not including the families, that this organization is supposed to be helping as a bridge. And, you know, so when you think of that about that, we're not even helping 10% of the veterans. And so of course, you know, this thing has heated up. And I, you know, looking at everything, what can we do? Well, no, you can't do that. That's gotta be a state law change. We go over here, can I give them more money? No, they can't because they gotta request it. And one of the reasons they haven't requested more money is because if they request 10% more than they did last year, then it says in state law that the Board of County Commissioners are able to make, I think, five or six appointments. And it's kind of like they don't want us to make those appointments. And then even the appointments are specified in state law. So some, like if you were in the Afghan, you know, you were in Afghanistan, you can't, you can't be in it. And then the organizations are the ones who submit a name. But they may submit, a lot of times they said they submit one name. So it's not a competition. So it's not like all veterans could come out. And I'm a veteran. I like to serve. I like to volunteer. You can't do it. It's state law. So one of the things I've been working on is they're looking at state law, you know, and I've been in state legislature, and it takes a long time to get something passed at the state. I said, well, what can we do now that's actionable? We gotta take some action. And so I said, well, let's have, we have, let's have an Office of Veteran Affairs. Now, we won't be the one giving out the benefits because legally it's that group. But we could have an ombudsman that would be there part-time. And that person will go to their meetings and kind of help create a bridge between the veterans in Hamilton County and them. That person would also look at state law and be able to testify on our behalf. That person will be able to give us some kind of data. This is how many calls have come in from veterans. And we could say, wait a minute, this many calls came in, but you only helped this many people. Money that we were going to give to them that they didn't request, put those dollars toward the ombudsman office and have them be able to pay for advertising, you know, in the stadium, on television, on radio. So now more veterans know about the service and that office. And then that office would also, I'm saying, let's have a major event. We have not had a major event in Hamilton County for veterans. And it doesn't have to be on Veterans Day. Our Paycor Stadium deal leased with the Bengals says we get three community days. We've never used them. Let's do a community day down at Paycor Stadium and have all of DAV, disabled veterans are there with their booth. The VA is there, housing folks are there, all the legal components that you need. But then let's have food trucks and music for the families and make this a big, big day for Hamilton County. So I introduced that resolution. I'm still pushing forward to try to get that done. But that's not the only step. But now we do have a step where we have somebody that has to report under our toolage as the Board of County Commissioners. So that's what's kind of going on right now. And there's a lot of, and there's a lot of veterans with ideas. Let's get the ombudsman so he could take in, or he or she could take in those ideas and try to see how we put those ideas to work. But right now, we don't have anyone to turn to.
Is it proper for veterans to be able to come before the commissioners and talk a little bit about what their needs may be?
Yes, they could come. We've had them come. And they can come to our, our meetings. We meet every Tuesday and Thursday, but Thursday is the day we take public comment. And we've had a lot of veterans with ideas. In fact, the ideas I just came up with came from veterans. But we need somebody, I think, that is charged with meeting and taking in those ideas, making sure none of them fall through the crack, try to see how we can implement some of those ideas. And that's why I think the ombudsman is important. But I think the event is important because we get a wide net of veterans from all over Hamilton County. And we leave hopefully no one behind by getting this major event. But that would be what the ombudsman would be organizing and putting together as well. I have a veteran who is one of my top volunteers. And I've brought her in as a volunteer staff person to help also deal with this. Her name is Teresa Burns. She's a disabled Army veteran. And she's been helpful with my office in talking with different veterans, helping me get this resolution together so that I can try to implement their ideas and bring them forward.
And I'm sure that the goal of all, all three Hamilton County Commissioners
Yes.
is to find something to match together ideas that can achieve the ultimate goal of serving the veterans.
Absolutely. Our board, we have been wrestling and grappling with this because again, you've got state law. You've got state law saying the judge, common police judge makes the appointment. You got state law that probably was put in, I mean, it was put in before we had social media and other marketing opportunities. So you've got that going. We've got, you know, looking at how do we help veterans now? And we're, we're in our budget season. So we want to make sure we don't put a budget forward that we know is not going to help veterans. If we put the same budget, we'll have those same results of $0 for eyeglasses, $0 for pharmacy needs, you know, $2,000 for utility needs at a time when the utilities are getting ready to go up. I know there's a lot of veterans that need help, but they don't even know that this is available. So we're working as quick as we can to try to come up with something. And I just thought if we had some ombudsman to kind of help us navigate this and try to be actionable. And so my colleagues, everyone's looking at how can we, you know, get this, get this moving forward.
Well, you were talking about if the board was able to expand from where its present number, I think the present number is four, and it expanded to six. And then if the commissioners allocated money, which they requested, the commissioners would have a better idea of how those dollars are being used. So you talked about earlier, the dollars are not being used for eyeglasses or for everything else. If the board expanded, am I correct? Then you would have a better way of following how those dollars are being used. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think the, the issue though is, I think, the direction that we think it should be going and what veterans think. One, they have to request the funding. And so far, they have not. And like you said, it's because they don't want the commission to have any authority. And with us, you gotta understand where we're at. We, we're elected by the people, you know, 212,636 people voted for me. They want me to be able to do something, but I'm over here with the state law and this group that's independent that's supposed to be doing something. And so I just think we have to be creative if we can. And if you're not gonna accept the money, we still want to spend money to help veterans. And how do we do that? Maybe we help on the marketing side. Maybe we help having this event. Maybe we help in those kind of ways to get more people to know about it.
And you're exactly right. If you simply put it on a website, that's passive advertising. You and I both have been in radio. We understand that's passive advertising. You need to be able to get out there where it's in front of the people. Use all the social media platforms you have.
Yes.
All the advertising, marketing that you can utilize
Yes.
to get the word out because they may be seeking that information. But if you have that more readily available by marketing
Right.
then it makes it easier for a veteran, which we should serve. We're proud of what they've done.
Yes.
We thank them for their service.
Yes.
In whatever branch they were in, whatever war, peace time or wartime with what they've done. As you say, we do not want to leave veterans behind in any situation.
No, we thank them for their service, but now it's time for us to provide the service.
And it's key that the Hamilton County Commissioners, you as president of the board, that you're directing this, working with the other two, trying to get the ultimate solution to help the veterans. Commissioner, there have been some exciting things happening in Hamilton County. One of them is something that I know your passion about. It's the Hamilton County Bus on Wheels. If you'll tell us about that.
Yeah, I'm excited. It's called the 513 Relief Bus. And I want to say that Waycross to me has played a role in that because when I first got elected, we had $158 million with different things. But people said, how do I get to it? I've never had to ask for government help before. And so we created a portal, 513 Relief. We then had a Relief-a-thon. I came up with this idea. I said, man, Relief-a-thon, it's like Telethon, but the opposite. Telethon, we're trying to raise money. Relief-a-thon, we're trying to connect you to the money. And so we did a two-hour special right here at Waycross. And we had people on Zoom, the different partners and folks. And it was great. We helped a lot of people. But one of the things people were asking for was that was a one-time deal. How do we do it on a permanent way? So anyway, I have a radio show and I had the governor on. And I had the NAACP president and UC Health and some others. And at that time, people weren't taking the vaccination, particularly African-American community. And the governor was saying, how can we do it? How can we do it? And the NAACP president said, how can we get a big bus? But we had no model. And so I started researching and I saw Hampton University. They had a RV and they were doing the vaccinations. And I decided to get on a plane, risk my life in the middle of COVID because I feel like if we got this, we could really save a lot of people. So anyway, I go down there, I see their RV, I meet with them. And then I come back and I said, this is it, but I want to put a twist on it. I want this to be an asset that we buy now, but now it's Hamilton County on wheels. It's all of our services. It's our economics. I want health services. I want the bus to be able to do a variety of things. And so we started out with a body double from UC Health because of course it takes time to build a bus. And I went out, we had no marketing. You can appreciate this. So people were like, a bus is out there, but I don't know anything about it. And so I made these flyers and I created this meet commissioner, Alyssa Reese at the bus. So the people started coming and they started understanding. So we had the medical side was the vaccination at that time. And then we had the economics where you can get, you know, sign up for rental assistance, mortgage assistance and all of our, all of our needs. So it's never been done before. Well, now we have our bus. And because I said, you know, the issues of services getting out to the county, it didn't begin with COVID. It's not going to end with COVID. Let's have an asset to make Hamilton County on wheels. And people, you know, they call and get their food delivered. They call and get Uber to take them to this place, that place. Their groceries are being delivered. So now we want to deliver our services so you don't have to come downtown. This 513 Relief Bus is coming. So it's a state-of-the-art bus. We use ARPA dollars to, to get it. And the backside is the medical side. We take blood pressure checks, glucose checks. We're gonna start, we're gonna do a cancer screening. We're looking to do some dental education. So the back part of the bus is all the medical and free. And then the front part of the bus has where we have different providers, like we did on the Relief-a-thon, different partners. They're on the bus. Talbert House is on the bus. Urban League, just so many different people on the bus. And you could get counseling on the bus. You can get, sign up for services on this particular bus. And you go to 513relief.org and it tells you the different services, where we're gonna be and what the services are gonna be on the bus. We can pull up to festivals. We pulled up at Forest Park at a festival. We can pull up to different places. And when we show up, here's all these services at no cost. We have council on aging for seniors. They, we have a $2 million fund to help with repairs and utilities. But now the bus shows up, you can go right there and they could take your application and talk with you one-on-one. So it's a relationship builder. It is our services in a new way coming to you. We have a mobile, what we call a mobile strike team, special forces that comes out to help. And we've helped 15,000 people already. And we have gone to over 100 stops and over 30 different zip codes. So people are looking for the 513 Relief Bus. And we even now have free birth certificates. If you want to get your birth certificate, we could do it right on the bus and it's free. So we have lots of partners. It's like the Relief-a-thon that we had here, but now it's on wheels and it's in a permanent way. So I just want to thank Waycross for, for letting me do the Relief-a-thon to show that there is a need and then be able to now have it as a bus.
Well, Commissioner Reese, I mean, we, Waycross's mission is to help the community. And we are the connection to the local community and that's what we do. Another thing that is a great connection is it's great to have the large companies, the manufacturing companies, and have the large come in here at the tax-based dollars and everything else so that other things can be accomplished. But the backbone of America has always been small business.
Yes.
That has been the backbone. And one of the things that I find truly exciting is the fact is that in the Sharonville Convention Center, you have an office to help small businesses.
Yeah, we're very excited. It's not at the Convention Center, but we had a major event. We kicked off there at the Sharonville Convention Center. One of the things we saw during the COVID is how do we help small businesses? And we've done $14 million in grants countywide to help the small businesses stay afloat at that very difficult time. But when I gave the state of the county last year, I felt like we need to step forward and be the county for small businesses. After, you know, COVID is kind of a little bit behind us, people are rebounding. How do you, how do you move forward? How do you grow? And you can't be a county that grows without having strong small businesses. So I said, listen, we want to be the number one county for small businesses. But in order to do that, we don't have a small business office. And so I pushed forward and my colleagues supported it to have a office, the Hamilton County Office of Small Business for the first time in history. And we've been able to help a lot of small businesses. But again, you can't just have this. You gotta, you gotta market. You gotta get the word out. And so I said, let's have a Hamilton County Small Business Day. First time in history. Let's do it at the Sharonville Convention Center. And everybody's like, okay. I said, but this small business, it can't be a leaflet. If anybody knows me, I hate the leaflet fairs, you know. You come in a small business, you get your leaflet and you go home. And I grew up in small business. So my parents always told me, when we leave the company and go somewhere, we have to have a shot at getting a contract. Not to say we're gonna get the contract, but it has to be a shot at it because we're losing money when we shut down because we're small and having to go to an event. So I always kept that in the back of my mind. So this event, we had 1,000 small businesses from Hamilton County that signed up and came out. And I said, I want to make sure it's actionable. So we had one room where you could apply for grants and the person was there to help you. We had another room where you could go one-on-one. You're ready to do business and I got a company and I'm ready to get somebody. Me and you had a 15-minute one-on-one where you could pitch your business. I'll tell you what my needs are. That was super. Got a lot of great feedback from there. And then there were businesses that say, hey, I got a business. I'm doing all this. I don't know how to pitch my business in, you know, three sentences. So they had a person there to help break down your business in three sentences and you could take it with you. So now you've got to pitch when you're pitching your business. So it was just phenomenal. And we had a big luncheon where we talked to some small businesses and how they're doing as it relates to COVID and some who've gone through different programs. So we really want to make sure that we're number one. We're gonna continue with the Office of Small Business. We're adding a, we partner with Alloy because they have all of the, Alloy Development has all the tools. We also have another tool that will help you do your QuickBooks, set up all that at no charge. And then we're very excited to expand now that we're going to have a storefront grant. So in this budget, we now, you know, you see these storefronts in a lot of our municipalities. And the storefronts are your front door. And small businesses need space and the storefront needs to have small businesses. So we're working now with a grant that will be coming out to help with storefronts around the whole county. To help small businesses.
And I think that's really a great thing being offered because one of the things that's coming out of COVID, restaurants, hotels were hit very, very hard. Restaurants to this day are having trouble finding employees because they don't want to go back there because if there's an upsurge of COVID again, they feel that's the first industry and they'll be laid off again. But when you take a look at small business, it really is a framework where they don't know how to market. We get back to the marketing. So many, and I know you'll agree with this, so many of the small businesses think, well, it's like the baseball Field of Dreams. I call it the business Field of Dreams. They put their store together, they open it up, they expect the doors to just come flowing with customers and they don't. They put up a website that's really not interactive. They need to know how to market. That's a strong element. And there's also the element that you talked about, the QuickBooks. How do I, how do I pay for this? I want to make sure I don't get behind on taxes and everything else. So I mean, and having that kind of mode in Hamilton County is being very aggressive and attracting small businesses. And the key also will be, I'm sure, that you would agree, to retain those small businesses.
Absolutely. To retain and also grow. And that, and all those things that you talked about are so important that, you know, you lose a lot of business the first, the second year. Got a lot of energy, ready to go, but don't have the foundational stuff and access to capital. And a lot of times when they're opening up, they don't get the extra money to market. So they don't have money to market. So we're open with our Office of Small Businesses and the tools that we have. We'll be able to hopefully help with that. We're also gonna be hosting a pitch night for small businesses. So we're really gonna be aggressive and trying to help create, retain and grow small businesses. But we gotta have a goal. And our goal has to be, you know, I want to be able to measure what we're doing. How many small businesses did we have last year versus this year? How many have grown here? How many used X, Y, and Z services? And so we're hopeful that the Office of Small Business, I want them to host a state of small businesses in Hamilton County. That could be every year. And so we can kind of measure what we're doing.
And another important element of that is not only they have the small businesses, know how to do everything in attracting the customers, but for people to believe in going and shopping at small businesses.
Absolutely. Definitely shopping at small businesses. We want the dollar to rotate three to five times before it leaves Hamilton County. That's the only way that we grow, creating jobs, creating opportunities. But we gotta spend our dollars local.
A couple of other things that recently came out in some publications that Hamilton County has opened a new parking garage near the Finley Market. And also there's some new apartments, so new development happening right there by Finley Market.
Yeah, absolutely. There's a, one of the issues was parking. People say, I want to come down to Finley Market, but my goodness, it's so hard to park. And so the garage allows people to park that are at Finley Market. But also when there's a game at FC and, and, you know, lots of folks are coming down there for the game, they also have a place to park. There's a couple, Rosie and Jerry Baker. They're out of Evendale. And every Friday, you can see a post of them down at Finley Market. It's like their date night. And they kept asking, when are you gonna get this garage open? So that was, I think, a very good piece. But next to the garage, we also broke ground on affordable housing. Senior affordable housing. We don't have a lot of affordable housing anyway, but particularly for senior citizens. It's very difficult. So that will be a new place for senior citizens. We have put in a lot of money as a government entity, more than we've ever done in history. We put in $40 million for affordable housing. When we got the ARPA money, we had to make some decisions. And we said affordable housing is a very important component. So we put $40 million in. We have a partnership with Cincinnati Development Fund so we can leverage their funds as well. And we went right in and hit some projects that wouldn't have never been able to get off the ground. And one of them was this project for senior housing by the Finley Market. So it's going to be a lot of ribbon cuttings. We are really trying to tackle this affordable housing component. But we also said, listen, we've got people dealing with taxes. And one of the things I said, I wanted to carve out $5 million of those dollars to help people stay in the home they already have. So affordable housing to me is a twofold positioning. Yes, new affordable housing, people getting in the house for the first time. But what about the people that's in their house now and the taxes is higher than the mortgage? We've got to have something for them. So we put a $5 million piece over there to help people as it related to the taxes. And also I have been pushing very hard because when we passed the two stadiums to be built, they, homeowners were promised they were gonna get 30% rebate. It only has been realized three times in history in 20 years. One of those times, when I first got in, got elected, I was able to get the full 30% in 2021 for the '22 year. I haven't been able to get the full 30% since then, but I have pushed the, because of me putting the 30%, the administration who was in single digits are now in double digits. So we got 12%. And I'm gonna continue to put, push on that because, again, one, if we keep our promise to, to the contract for the Bengals, we have to keep our promise to what was promised to the homeowners. But also because we, it's part of being affordable. We have to help people be able to afford the house they already have. So we don't have an even greater problem as it relates to affordable housing while also investing in new affordable units. And that's what we're working on.
Well, seniors, 20 years ago, 30 years ago, they may have put a financial planner. Back then, you were thinking about a financial planner possibly, but you were thinking, I can live on this amount of money. What seniors are finding out, Commissioner, as you well know, is the fact is that their dollars are getting squeezed and squeezed. The taxes are hurting them. Going to the grocery store, what you could buy a year ago, it's higher now. What you could buy in gas, it's higher now. It's an upward spiral that keeps going and seems like there's no end to it.
No, I think you're right. And so when we had the 51, the reason why I love also the 513 Relief Bus, I went out there to, you know, at that time, we had 79 locations. I went to 74 of them. Went everywhere from Harrison, Colrain Township, Forest Park. I went to all of it. And what I kept seeing was senior citizens were being denied because it's, you know, it's the federal money and we're taking the application, but it's federal money. And I kept saying, what's going on? And they said, because seniors were getting social security, they could not get any help. And so I went back and said, no. And so I went back and said, no, and we've got to find something. And so we have a senior levy. And I said, let's come back and see what we can do. And so we came up with a one million dollar fund. And my colleagues supported it to help seniors who couldn't get help because they couldn't get help on, on, uh, the ARPA, but they could get help on, on the other fund. And it went over so well that it got, it put back in the budget again. So it'll be two million dollars. So we have something for the senior citizens. And I'm very sensitive to that. I tell them, three people, don't mess with them. Uh, don't mess with the babies, don't mess with the veterans and don't mess with my senior citizens if you don't want me to get angry. And I really thought about that because I would have seniors writing me and you could see the handwriting was, you know, and, and I said, wait a minute. Ladies, I've never missed my taxes. And this time it's gone up and I can't. So I want to stay in my home. And I took that letter and I took it to the meeting. I read it and I said, we've got to do something. So anyway, we're able to come up with the Senior Citizen Fund. And a good thing about the bus, when it comes out, it doesn't say like, oh, you're in this fund or that. You don't know what fund it is. You'll come to, you came to get help. So we try to bring it all together, um, and, and, and help as many people as possible.
Another thing that has worked extremely well for Hamilton County, you're having winning teams. So by the Reds winning, the Bengals may be somewhat of a down year, but they're exciting right now with the backup quarterback. And, uh, in addition to the success of FC Cincinnati, you take a look at it and when you have successful teams, then businesses build around those stadiums and those teams. And that brings tourism, which brings dollars to Hamilton County.
Yeah, I'm huge, I'm a former athlete myself. And I'm huge on, uh, sports and tourism. And one of the things that I, um, we, you mentioned the professional teams. But let me say that also in Hamilton County, we've got some of the top youth amateur athletes. I mean, we've got, we're winning state championships and all kinds of, my, my alma mater, Withrow, they, they won the state championship in rugby. Um, I, they didn't even offer rugby when I was there. Uh, we, we, we have, you know, molar and, you know, football and volleyball. We're winning volleyball state championships. So we have, uh, we have an awesome group of athletes. And of course, shout out to the parents who have to run to every, you know, every type of, uh, practice and everything. I'm just the auntie and I'm running everywhere, cheerleading competition, everything. So one of the things that I propose that I'm looking at, we're, we're, as our county is looking at, um, is to see if we could have a youth amateur sports facility. That would be a tourism draw. It's a ninety-one billion dollar industry. And so we're working, uh, we have a, um, a company Victus that's come on board to look into it. I don't know what the results are gonna be. What I do know that there's a lot of tournaments that happen every single weekend. I'm an auntie and I'm traveling a lot more. I said, I'm just the auntie. Uh, but when my nieces and nephews say, are you gonna be there? Okay, I have to be there. But I've traveled all over, uh, to their tournaments, to their competitions. And I feel it's an area we're losing out on uh, because they, these tournaments happen every single week. So it's not seasonal. It's not, oh, the season's over and the stadium is sitting there. It is every week, we're coming, we're coming, we're coming. So, uh, I know I've had them, they're meeting with a lot of people, meeting with the mayor of Forest Park, uh, they met the mayor in Blue Ash. I had them meet everybody to see, let's take a real look at this because we can have that feeder that goes into what, what you just talked about, uh, these winning teams and then also more scholarships. Because at these tournaments, that's where the coaches, the college coaches come in. And they're there and they can see. So, um, really looking at us, uh, looking at that, I want us to be very aggressive and, and pulling in, like you said, if there's something out there, tourism, that can be done and should be done and we can do it. Um, and I'm not saying this is something for all of us to do, but if we put the information out there, maybe we attract investors, say, hey, this is the next stop. We need to be there. And so that's what we're, uh, we're working on. So we're really excited about it.
I've been a manager of traveling baseball, of the juniors and seniors. And a couple of things that you hit upon are right on. One is the fact is when you have a tournament, you may have eight, nine, ten teams and they may be coming from Indiana, Illinois, Michigan. That's people coming here, tourism, seeing what Hamilton County has to offer. Those are dollars there. But also in addition to that, you talked about the college coaches. I would have college coaches and pro coach, pro scouts come to me and say, we need a shortstop. Do you have a good shortstop on your team? So we have those type of things. So that is a tremendous resource that you're, you're trying to tap into because that can really be of value to Hamilton County Commissioner County.
Absolutely, and I'm really big on, on tourism. Um, you may not know this, but I used to be the Deputy Director of Tourism for the State of Ohio.
I did know that.
And I loved it and, uh, did a lot. I helped also promote the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame. And that's why I said, wait a minute, down in Cincinnati, Hamilton County, we've got a lot of people in southwest Ohio. And that's really how the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame came about. And there are a lot of people that are in there. Um, we now have twenty-two thousand people have come through. It's state-of-the-art, interactive. Uh, Bootsy Collins is doing a song tribute for it. Um, we've been in Billboard magazine. Uh, it's free. I want it to be free and people can go down there. James Brown and Bootsy Collins, Isley Brothers, who are, you know, right from these areas. Um, and people could go down and enjoy it with their whole family. And I, I get a kick out of watching people. I sit at the top and look down like, oh my God, they're enjoying themselves. Senior citizens have brought busloads to come, young people have come. Um, families have been down there and it's open every day from six AM to eleven PM, completely free. It's across the street from the Paycor Stadium and next to the Andrew Brady Stadium. So I just encourage people, come on out. It's, you learn, I call it educate, edutainment. You learn and you entertain at the same time. You get to dance, you get to hit the buttons, the QR codes. You get to perform with Bootsy Collins in, in a virtual, uh, as well as Penny Ford. So it's just a, a lot of fun.
Well, that's, uh, for those who may not be familiar with the Black Music Walk of Fame. I mean, you have twelve inductees, you have twelve, you have what are called influences you can talk about. So let's talk about the inductees and the influences. What's that all about?
Yeah, so the inductees, every year there'll be about four of them. They have a committee. Lincoln Ware, uh, chairs the committee. He's been in radio for fifty years. I'm sure you know Lincoln. Um, he broke in a lot of the songs. And in there you got the stars. So like you said, you got Bootsy Collins, you got, uh, uh, the Isley Brothers has a star. You have Louise Sharpshire, who was the original writer of We Shall Overcome version from right here. Uh, you've got Dr. Charles Swole, uh, who was the first to win a gospel Grammy for gospel music from Cincinnati. Um, you have High Tech, so we're talking fifty years of hip hop. And he has produced a lot of songs for Snoop Dogg and Fifty Cent and so many other people. Um, so you have all of these folks. You have Midnight Star, the group. Uh, you also have the Deal, the group The Deal, uh, from this area. So you have all these, people are like, every time someone goes there, they say, I didn't know these people were from southwest Ohio. And even though it's called Cincinnati, it's all of Hamilton County and southwest Ohio. So you got the Dayton, the Springfield. Then we have interactive, um, kiosks where you can feel the vibration of the music. Uh, everything's in braille. We wanted to be very inclusive. And they've got people like, you know, John Legend is in, is on the kiosk. You've got, you know, Zap and Roger and just so many people. Bootsy Collins' brother Catfish. Um, James Brown has a star because James Brown, a lot of his hits were made right here in Cincinnati at King Records. And his daughter came and she wore the cape. And, uh, we had five thousand people for the opening. We had to, you know, shut the doors. Um, but since that time, we've had almost twenty-two thousand people come down there and visit. And that's what we want. We got a, a beat maker machine. You can make beats, uh, in the summertime. We got this waterfall with a light show. We have a light show every night at nine o'clock and ten o'clock. And the light is just, is automatic. And then we have these, um, these media consoles. You can go there and dance. And I just, I get a kick out of seeing people.
So what's your favorite dance to do?
Oh my God. I would say Penny Ford, The Running Man, but you gotta be in shape because she, she will wear you out. And, um, and, and, and the technology we have is nowhere in the country on an outdoor facility like this. So, um, we've had a lot of national people come down and say, there's nothing like this. They've been in New York, they've been in California. And when we were doing this, I said, listen, bring me Disney World, but on a budget. I want the imagination, I want it interactive, I want it augmented reality. I stayed up all night researching augmented reality because I wanted to bring this world to everybody that grandma and the grandkids could equally enjoy in the platforms that they have. So we got a lot of QR codes, um, as well, a lot of push buttons. And then you get a snapshot of the history. And then people hit the QR code to learn a lot more. So it's just been, uh, it's been amazing. And this, uh, new song, Bootsy, I'm so excited, Bootsy Collins. I was like, oh my God, Bootsy Collins, we'll have our own song. This is awesome. Um, so it has just really taken off nationally and internationally. And people are coming from all over to see it. And that's what we want. We, we're taking back our culture and history and telling people, here's where it really came from. Here's where these sounds came from. And we take all genres, you know, from opera to jazz to hip hop, R and B, funk. We influenced a lot of that, so.
And from what I understand, music was in your family and your home.
Yes, it was. Uh, my mother, uh, unfortunately she passed away, uh, from breast cancer, actually, uh, three days after Christmas. But, uh, my mother was a singer, uh, coming from the West End. And she loved Aretha Franklin and they used to call her Baby Aretha. And my father had worked for Motown as a local person here. And, uh, he, uh, Red Fox, he had to put on a show with Red Fox. And my mother was there to sing, but her band didn't show up. He was not gonna let her sing and Red Fox said, let her sing. And he heard her voice. And so, uh, he went on to record her self-titled album, Barbara Howard. And it was, uh, on his own record label. Back then it wasn't easy to have your own independent record label. So at the, when I'd be in the studio, when I, they ended up getting married, they had me, and I'm in the studio and here's Bootsy, here's OJ's, here's, you know, different people. I thought everybody had that life. And when I, my mother died, I realized that, uh, we can't let our, these stories die when we die. And I really wanted to do this Walk of Fame for that next generation. And maybe they hear their stories and say, you know, I was about to give up, but I heard their story. I'm gonna keep going. And so that's the, the whole mission. But we want to do it in an entertainment way where you're there, you're having a fun, your families are together, friends are together, and then you get the history.
Well, Cincinnati has, and Hamilton County has a tremendous history. Andy Williams graduated from Western Hills High School. Doris Day came from Cincinnati.
Yeah.
You can go on, on, on. But one of the things that's kind of interesting also about Hamilton County and Cincinnati and the greater Cincinnati area is it's gone Hollywood. Hollywood has discovered, and of course there are tax dollars that are coming from the state of Ohio, which encourages major companies and independent companies come here, but when are we gonna see, uh, you in a movie?
You know, we, it's so funny because one of the things, uh, you know, the people know about the tourism, but they don't know about the, we used to have an Ohio Film Office because we did some tax credits for film. And the lady that was running it quit after the legislature had passed it. And I got called into the office, they said, you're up. You're the Ohio Film Office Director and write the tax credits. I'm like, what? So I got a chance to deal with the movie houses and kind of see the financing side of movies. And I thought that was pretty cool, uh, pretty cool opportunity and to be able to help write the first tax credits in, in Ohio, in, uh, Ohio history. So I'm very connected to, uh, movies. Things have changed, there are a lot more opportunities now. And I do think there's a story to be told about Hamilton County and the things that, that we've done.
Well, Director Todd Hayes, who directed Carol, which was predominantly shot here.
Yeah.
Uh, they talked about how friendly it was to work with everybody in greater Cincinnati and Hamilton County. And they loved the architect that was available here. Uh, and also they said they'd had it, not only getting the extras, but they had professional actors that they gave speaking roles here. So that was a plus as well. So a lot of good things are happening here in Hamilton County.
Yeah, we have an awesome film commission and Kristen and her team is doing a great job. And Doris Owens, the Owens Group that does all the premieres for the, for the movies. Uh, so we've got a lot of talent here.
Commissioner, one of the things that, uh, is very important, of course, is our youth.
Yeah.
And, uh, talk to us if you would about the youth grants.
Yeah, so our board thought it was super important that some of the dollars that we had go toward youth, uh, grants. And I just personally am very, um, committed in that we must get our programs to the youth before the street program gets to them. And we're not gonna save everybody. But there's some kid out there that's ready to do the right thing, but is at the crossroads. And we have to make sure they have the resources and the connections to positive activities. Um, and so we put four point nine million dollars toward youth resiliency grants. And these were programs that are already happening, but how do they reach more youth? And it was so diverse. I mean, it was everything from boxing to cooking classes, uh, to, um, uh, camps. A lot of parents can't afford camps, putting them in positive camps. So it was so many, um, diversified things that it was nothing that you say, well, I don't like this, but I like that. Um, you know, how to do social media, the arts. It was a combination of things. And so, uh, we were very pos, we were very excited to be able to extend that out and get to more youth. Um, in addition to that, uh, there's a program called Beyond Your Imagination. And, um, I'm supportive of it and, uh, that Commissioner Dubas put forward. And there's a, a grant program to help with, we have a band and they didn't have, uh, instruments. How do you get more instruments? So that's not a deterrent for youth. So there were a lot of, uh, smaller grants we added to that and we're gonna keep that program going. There was a, another program to provide tickets for youth to be able to go to, um, concerts. If your parents, you don't have exposure, you can't go, you don't get to go to the symphony because you don't have exposure. That's not right. You can't go to a baseball game at Great America because you don't have the money. So now this program has, provides tickets and it also provided tickets at the Taylor Swift, uh, concert as well. So we're doing an array of things to try to support youth. We now have an Office of Youth, um, something I really pushed for because I want to put my hands around, how many youth are we helping, uh, this year versus last year? And what do we need to do next year? And so all of these programs now will fall under the Office of Youth. And the Office of Youth will also focus on, uh, employment. Um, and so the data came out that so far we've helped twenty-six thousand youth in Hamilton County, um, through the programs that we have. And so we're very, uh, excited about that and we want that to grow.
Well, that is key to have a program like that because the youth of today, there's no question. There are so many negative influences. They're, they're being pulled in all different direction. They're looking for help. And by having this, it's a positive experience, a positive path for them.
Absolutely. And then you can go to our Office of Youth and I had to go to fifty different, they will then plug, hey, did you know about this? Hey, did you know about that? Um, similar to the kinship program. We have a lot of grandparents, uh, family members taking care of, uh, the child. But they didn't even know there's a kinship program where you can get, we, we offer assistance, financial assistance for you to do that. So we're trying to pull these things so you don't feel like you're overwhelmed with fifty places to go.